Good evening. The date is March 19th, 2024. Time is approximately 18:03 hours, 6:03 PM. And I would like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Ms. Klein to participate remotely. Ms. Klein has requested to participate in tonight's meeting remotely for a personal matter specifically due to a family commitment in Tennessee.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to allow Ms. Klein to participate remotely from Tennessee, and when it has properly been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. All right, and we have an agenda before us, or do we need to wait? Is she on?
Ms. Klein, can you hear us?
To the board for allowing me to participate remotely, I appreciate it.
So we have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to have the agenda approved, and it has been duly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. White, would you like to read the...
I move that the Frederick County School Board of Virginia enter into a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, dismissals, resignations, information only, substitute teachers, volunteers, and goals of the superintendent pursuant to the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to the Virginia Code Section
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. We are now in closed session, and we will reconvene around 7:00 PM. All right. All right, Ms. White.
All right, I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to return from closed session, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a motion, all right.
All right, I would like to move that the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in closed session, and only public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed section was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, Mr. Chair, I apologize, that's a roll call.
Oh, I apologize.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
All right, we have a motion for a five-minute recess. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will recess for five minutes.
I'd like to move that the board reconvenes meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to reconvene, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are back in session.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have two motions coming out of closed session. First, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the personnel actions, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None opposed, and it carries.
The second, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, and D from compulsory attendance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to remove those students for...
Compulsory attendance.
Compulsory, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been carried. All right, next on the agenda is the moment of silence, so if you all could just join me in a few moments of silence, please. And thank you for that. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're doing something a little different tonight. Anthony, I'm not going to be able to pronounce this, so if I mess it up, but where's Anthony? State your last name for me, brother.
Luciani.
Okay, thank you. He's from Sharando High School, and he is going to lead our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. So thank you so much, come on up some.
Come right up here.
Come on up here.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you so much for doing that. All right, next we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We also have a proclamation for School Social Work Appreciation Week, which is March 3rd through the 9th, 2024. Social school workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face challenges to school success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, and mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. School-based mental health programs are critical to early identification of early intervention for mental health programs, and in the provision of appropriate services when needed. School social workers, being licensed mental health professionals in schools, provide necessary assessment, intervention, and counseling, family outreach, and community referrals. Our school social workers serve as vital members of the school's education team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between home, school, and community to ensure student academic success. Here now may be proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of March 3rd through the 9th, 2024, as the National School Social Work Week. And thank you to all our social workers in the schools. This is a tireless and thankless job sometimes, but you really do make a difference each and every day, so we're grateful to have you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we can see if we have any social workers here?
No social workers?
Yes, yes. We'll take a picture, Mr. Chair, if we can go on down.
All right, next we have the Student and Staff Recognitions, and I will turn this over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to announce our Awards of Excellence. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with me and Mr. Sturtevant, the chair, for a photograph, then move to the right and remain in front while we take a photo of the entire group being recognized. So I'm going to ask the chair to come on down, and we'll start the ceremony. Thank you.
In February, students from James Wood and Millbrook High Schools traveled to Richmond, Virginia, to participate in the VHSL Class IV State Swim Championships. The results are as follows. Representing James Wood High School, for the boys' swim team, earning an eighth place, Ethan Britton. Alex Hua. Eddie Grimes. Eddie also had a seventh-place finish in the 100 backstroke and 11th-place finish in the 200 freestyle. Callie Guyerson was the only girls' team qualifier and finished 17th in the 200 individual medley. If Callie could come down. Representing Millbrook High School, we have Kiera Webster. She earned a sixth-place finish in the Girls' 100 Butterfly. James Wood, Millbrook, and Sharando High School students recently participated in the VHSL Class IV State Indoor Track and Field Championships at Liberty University with the following results. The Girls' 3200-meter race, Alina Kiefer, she earned fourth place. Alina is representing James Wood High School. Also from James Wood, we have Ethan Pratt Perez for the 3200-meter race, third place. We also have Max Stein, earning seventh place in shot put. Representing Millbrook High School, we have Jada Arrington. She earned second place in the Girls' 300-meter race and fourth place in the Girls' 55-meter race. We also have Elijah McGee, earned fifth place in the Boys' 500-meter race. And Janai Washington, earning sixth place in the high jump. Representing Sharando High School in the Boys' 4x800-meter relay, we have Dylan McGraw here this evening. Dylan also, in the 1600-meter race, he earned sixth place as well. All right, students from James Wood, Millbrook, and Sharando High School participated in the VHSL Class IV State Wrestling Championships in Virginia Beach. The competition took place in February with the following results. Representing James Wood High School, Hayden Black earned third place in the 106-pound weight class. Max Mooney was a state runner-up in the 120-pound weight class. Now we're going to move on to Sharando High School. You want to do a picture? And actually, we're going to start with Millbrook High School. William Potter, third place in the 175-pound weight class. Ezra Doyle, fourth place in the 285-pound weight class. Representing Sharando High School, Anthony Luciani, he earned first place in the 138-pound weight class. This is... This is Anthony's third straight state championship win. Jake Dan earned second place in the 165-pound weight class. Zachary Hayes earned fourth place in the 144-pound weight class. Carter Straight earned sixth place in the 126-pound weight class. Congratulations to all of our athletes this evening. If you were a coach and are in the audience, if you could stand at this time to be recognized. The Apple Award is given to a teacher who achieves something which significantly contributes to their school community, uses creative or innovative instructional techniques, goes above and beyond for the student. We have several recipients for the Apple Award this evening. And present with us tonight is Amber Wallen. She is a homebound teacher and was nominated by a parent. Ms. Wallen's commitment has been a beacon of hope for us, particularly for my daughter who faces significant challenges due to her diagnosis. Her condition necessitates a homebound educational approach. Ms. Wallen has not only accepted this challenge, but has also made extraordinary efforts to understand and support my daughter, significantly impacting her life and ours. I am sharing this with you to highlight the profound difference one educator can make. The Inspiration Award is given to a staff member, instructional assistant, custodian, bus driver, office staff, school nutrition, facilities administrator, et cetera, who did something inspirational for the students, staff, parents, or community as a whole. We have several recipients for the Inspiration Award this evening. First is Garrett Jones. He's the accompanist at Millbrook High School and was nominated by a staff member. While many... While many staff members don't know Mr. Jones' face or work, our students do. There isn't an isolated instance where Mr. Jones is inspirational. Every day, Mr. Jones helps our students be the very best they can be. Especially in the musical rehearsals, he helps the students discover themselves and their characters. He is helping build our students to be better people with strong, confident voices. Kama Dawson is a guidance counselor at James Wood High School and was nominated by a parent. Ms. Dawson is more than deserving of this award. She is my son's guidance counselor and has been extremely helpful to my son. My son does not often comment about teachers or other professionals, but he always comments on how helpful, approachable, and easy to talk to Ms. Dawson is. He even said that he believes that she truly cares about him and all students, and does everything in her power to offer them genuine advice while taking as much time that is needed to listen to the student and parent's needs. She is fast to respond to any correspondence and even reached out to my son in the middle of her busy schedule when he needed assistance picking classes. We are lucky to have her as a counselor, and her dedication to my son and all the students of James Wood High School should not go unnoticed. Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Kim Grant is a bus driver for Frederick County Public Schools and drives Bus 242. Ms. Grant was nominated by a parent. Ms. Grant shows care and safety for our children every day. Ms. Grant communicates and knows all the children's names on the bus, and each child loves her. They can't wait to see her each morning and afternoon. Ms. Grant lets us know when she will be having a sub-bus driver, when she can, so we can be prepared if the bus is not on time. She is a wonderful bus driver and has the best kids on her bus. As a parent, I know that my child is safe, and I do not have to worry about my child going or coming home from school while in her care. Ms. Grant always greets the kids each morning and afternoon, and on special occasions will provide them with a special treat. Thank you, Ms. Grant, for a wonderful job.
All right. Okay, next up on our agenda is administrative appointments. So first, I would like to call up the new Assistant Principal of Red Bud Run Elementary School, Mrs. Jennifer Rawls. Please join me in welcoming her. Welcome. Ms. Jennifer Rawls moves from her current position as a librarian at Jordan Springs Elementary School into the role of Assistant Principal at Red Bud Run Elementary School. Ms. Rawls brings her, with her 12 years of librarian experience and 10 years of elementary teaching experience, all within Frederick County Public Schools. Ms. Rawls has a Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology from Mary Baldwin College, a Master's of Education from James Madison University, and a certificate in administration and supervision, also from James Madison University. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Jennifer Rawls. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hummer, Dr. Angelo, Mrs. Swager, and Mrs. Reed, thank you so very much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to become part of the Red Bud community, and I can't wait to get started.
Okay, next up, I would like to call up the new Assistant Principal of Dowell J., which is Mrs. Nicole Johnston. Come on down, please. Mrs. Nicole Johnston moves into the position of Assistant Principal at Dowell J. Howard from her current role as Senior Lead Teacher at Dowell J. Howard. In addition to her leadership role at Dowell J. Howard, Mrs. Johnston brings with her eight years of teaching experience in special education. She has an Associate's Degree in Elementary Education from Lower Ridge Community College, a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education with a minor in mild disabilities from George Mason University, and a Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction with an emphasis on social and emotional learning from the University of Virginia. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Johnston. Welcome.
Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Hummer, and members of the board, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm already working at Dowell J., so I'm excited to continue all the great work that we're having there, and I can't wait to look forward and working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a new HR Supervisor of Employee Services, Mrs. Toshika Edwards-Johnson. If you can come on down, please. Let's give her a round of applause. Mrs. Toshika Edwards-Johnson joins the HR team as a Supervisor of Employee Services. Mrs. Edwards-Johnson brings over 25 years of HR experience working in the federal contracting and nonprofit spaces. Mrs. Edwards-Johnson has a Bachelor's of Art in Political Science from the University of Maryland, Baltimore County. Additionally, she holds the Society for Human Resource Management People Analytics Specialty credential. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Edwards-Johnson. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer, thank you, the board, I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with the HR team and servicing the FCPS community. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is the HR Supervisor of Recruitment Retention, Mrs. Rachel Rinker. Come on down. Mrs. Rachel Rinker joins the HR team as a Supervisor of Recruitment and Retention after three years serving as Principal at Orchard View Elementary School, which I know is very hard for you to leave. Prior to their principalship at Orchard View, Mrs. Rinker was the Assistant Principal at Stonewall Elementary, an instructional coach at Indian Hollow as a math specialist and also, oh, excuse me, a math specialist at Indian Hollow, excuse me, and a fifth-grade teacher at both Armel and Gainesboro Elementary School. In addition to 10 years of experience in education, Mrs. Rinker holds a Bachelor of Arts and Master's of Arts in Elementary K6 Education from West Virginia University, and an Administrative Certificate in Educational Leadership from Salem International University. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Rachel Rinker.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hummer, cabinet members, I just want to say thank you for taking a chance on me in a new and exciting position. I'm enthusiastic and humbled to join... I'm enthusiastic and humbled to join the established but amazing HR team and be able to focus on recruiting and retaining high-quality staff because that is exactly what our students deserve. So thanks for taking a chance on me, and I won't let you down.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least is our new Supervisor of Vehicle Operations, Mr. Kevin Pope. Mr. Pope can come on down, please. Mr. Kevin Pope moves into this position of Supervisor of Vehicle Operations at the Transportation Department from his current role as CTE Auto Technology Teacher at Dowell J. Howard. Mr. Pope brings with him nine years of experience as a master technician. He is a graduate of James Wood High School and holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration from Aspen University. I would also like to mention that Mr. Pope is a product of FCPS, so we're so glad he stayed within our community. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Pope.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Hummer, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'm excited to go back to where I got my start and excited to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
We're at the point of our agenda for citizen comments. Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issue or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are taped-recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of official meetings, or official minutes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a recommendation to let those leave who want to leave, if you can make that statement, that would be great. Thank you, sir.
Those who are here for the award ceremony and wish to leave, we ask you to do so at this time.
Congratulations.
Get our speakers trimmed.
Congratulations.
All righty. Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board extend the 20-minute public comment period to allow everyone present this evening to speak if they desire.
Second. We have a motion to extend, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. I'm going to call your names up. Please step up to the microphone. Please speak into the microphone. And if I make a mispronouncing of your name, I do apologize. Is it Ms. Patta? It's R. Is it Patton? Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's Robert Patton. I live in the Backstreet District. Lived in Frederick County a little over 33 years. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I come here as a concerned citizen of Frederick County. Each one of you here are an elected official and are in a leadership position of the school board. Your conduct and behavior as leaders is to be expected of the highest standards. Recent incidents of unacceptable conduct and behavior by Mr. Atkins has been brought to the attention of the public. I call upon Mr. Atkins to voluntarily resign from the school board. I feel that he has disgraced himself, his family, the citizens of Frederick County, and the country. You can no longer be an effective leader of the school board when you display poor judgment and a lack of honor and integrity. And what I have seen this evening that I take the most personal insult to is for this man to stand and recite the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America when he has been charged criminally in an attempt to overthrow the government, as far as I am concerned. And I find that most distasteful and as insulting as it can be. And I thank you all again for your opportunity to address this matter to you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mary Peg Combs.
Thank you. My name is Mary Peg Combs, and I live in the Shawnee District. I am calling for the resignation of my representative, Miles Atkins, who was arrested for his role in the Capitol breach on January 6, 2021. I would like to address public statements made by Mr. Atkins and other board members. Mr. Atkins recently stated that 1/6 wasn't an insurrection and, quote, "To my knowledge, there was nobody that was armed out there." I refer him to court documents indicating rioters were in possession of the following: pepper spray, tasers, guns, hatchets, knives, baseball bats, the officers' own shields turned against them, and even the use of an American flagpole to assault 140 police officers injured that day, let alone others who suffered mental trauma, including four officers who later took their own lives. Mr. Atkins stated, quote, "I think it's people who were protesting," which is covered under the First Amendment. Everyone has the right to address their government. This was no mere protest. Is this how we should teach our kids to address their government? Doesn't he realize the kids are watching? Representative Funes publicly called all the 1/6 prosecutions "a travesty of justice," saying, quote, "These people didn't do anything wrong." When running for office, he said, "We need more focus on reading, writing, math, and civics." What would he have the children learn in civics class? To not respect the law? To not follow an oath to defend the Constitution, an oath taken by every one of you on this board? That when you lose, it's okay to disrupt the peaceful transfer of power by assaulting police officers, smashing windows, and occupying the Senate Chamber? Mr. Funes sits on the Student Conduct and Support Committee, and this conduct was okay with him? How can we expect these people to use good judgment for our kids when such poor judgment is on full display? Mr. Sturdivant, our board chair, publicly called Mr. Atkins' arrest "a distraction." That's an understatement, in my opinion. I agree with Mr. Hester, who called this, quote, "a gray cloud taking away from all the good going on." Mr. Atkins said he wouldn't be bullied into resigning. I am not a bully, sir. I am a retiree. I am a Grammy. I am a proud American and a proud Frederick County resident who believes that our school system is worth standing up for. Do the right thing this time, Mr. Atkins. Please resign, and thank you all for the opportunity to air my grievances peacefully.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Robert Galley.
There was a lot of kids here, so, oh, I'm sorry, Robert Galley, Back Creek District. There's a lot of kids here, so I had toned down what I was going to say, but I didn't realize the nonsense that I would hear while I was here in the audience. So I have a Constitution of the United States of America, which grants us due process, among other rights. And what some of these people here are advocating for is that we suspend due process. We just find somebody guilty because of our feelings and opinions. I don't know about everybody here, but I find that disturbing that people are advocating for the suspension of our constitutional rights. Something that I want to share with you, and you know, I don't write the news, these aren't my articles, it's just what I read. It comes from Newsweek. Forty percent think the election was stolen, forty percent of people. And you know, this is, you know, I don't know where they got these people. Thirty-six percent disagreed that the election was stolen, so maybe it's 64% that think the election was stolen. At 40%, that means 133 million Americans think the election was stolen. So stealing elections, that's treason. That's punishable by death. Drinking a Coors Light, I don't think that that's worthy of suspending due process, deciding somebody's guilty without any trial or anything else. And furthermore, the last thing I'd like to say is that on January 6, Mr. Atkins was not a school board member. He wasn't. He's just a private individual thinking the same thing that 133 million other Americans thought. Thank you.
Next is Kristi Scarborough.
Hello, members of the board. Most of you know who I am. I will be invoking my Fourth Amendment right, and I will not be giving my name or magisterial district today. I am here to say thank you to Miles. Miles, you are a Marine. You are a vet, and you fought for my right to come up here and invoke my Fourth Amendment. I think you do great things on this board. I support you immensely, and do not resign. Don't give these Karens what they want. These are not the majority of this area. You're going to hear from other people. If they want to get you off, they can go the legal route, and good luck. That's all I had to say. And by the way, when you're done, give me a call. Let's go have a beer.
Thank you. Next is Vic Canfield.
Mr. Chairman, board, thank you for your work that you do. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I too, as I listen to others, have seen a couple things that rather disturb me. To mention that a person is a disgrace to say the Pledge of Allegiance is beyond me, especially a person who has served time to protect that very flag that he said the Pledge of Allegiance to. But not only that flag, to protect each and every one of us, to be able to come up here and say these things, to be able to give our opinions and such, and that freedom with it. I also did hear an awful lot, "In my opinion," and that is fine, except it is just that, in one's opinion. While one has an opinion, that does not necessarily mean it's true or false. It does not necessarily state facts. It states opinions. We are a nation with a constitution that was written to follow at its time, by its word, throughout our country's existence. We should follow that constitution. We should follow due process. We've seen, even in the Senate, it might have been another one in the House, where due process was not followed for individuals there. They were accused of something, got all worked up, and they kicked them out. Well, whether they should have been kicked out or not is not the point. The point is, we need to follow due process. If we don't follow due process with one, then don't expect due process with others. Without due process, we are a nation that is crumbling quickly and will turn into nothing but a police state at best, and our students won't be protected without that due process. I have to ask, has there been anything by this man that says this is an actual physical, or even emotional really, state of danger to our students or to you on the board? I see you all sitting there looking quite comfortable to me, other than comments that we may not like on either side. I very much question the idea of resignation, and I would hope that as a board, you would follow the process and wait till the court even decides whether the man is guilty or not guilty. Thank you.
Brian Nury.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Hummer, or Dr. Hummer, I'm sorry. My name is Brian Nury, resident of the Opecan District. February 2022, it was a funny day. I was sitting in class, and I got a notice from a friend of mine who was on the Fairfax County School Board and said, "Hey, thanks for taking the heat off of us for a week." Because the DC News showed our illustrious board member with, who had posted a very immodest post from an earlier speaker depicting his fellow board members as devils with Hitler mustaches, probably after he was called out on the board by multiple members of the board and by the community, and he said, "I know, but I'll do better." On April 22, he had a charge of public intoxication. Was this doing better? On June 23 of last year, he had a DUI. Was this doing better? In February 2024, you actively advocated against providing meals for students, saying that it's not this board's job to feed kids, despite later saying that all the decisions you've made on this board have been for the students. Was this doing better? And then finally, February 24, you were arrested at your home, or at least nearby, after having made some vaguely threatening comments online. after having made some vaguely threatening comments online. Being caught with charges of being in a place where you're not supposed to be, and as a veteran, you know that there are places that we don't belong. Having claimed afterwards that you didn't use the hard ER, you used the soft A. I don't see too many members of this community really making a difference. And then public drinking, again. Has this only happened at the Capitol and in your car? Or has this happened at football games or school board member meetings? So when are you gonna do better? That's all I think I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Dobbs.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me with the mask on?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'll take it off, just to make sure I'm clear. Kathleen Dobbs, Back Creek. You may remember me from last week. I'm going to kind of pivot from what they were talking about to how it relates to school, because this isn't the courtroom. But last week, I cannot tell you how much hope you gave me when you said, I want you to come back here and give us a report card. And I almost was in tears when you were saying that. Not more than 24 hours later, you were arrested, which, the Capitol, not my issue. You know, leave that to everybody else. What I think is what I think, and I'm not gonna bring that here. Maybe you thought it was peaceful at first, and you just got swept up in it, whatever. But you told me that you felt for my son, who is African-American. I didn't mention that before. He's adopted. And you gave, besides Dr. Hummer and the principal, you gave me the most hope that day. And then to find that you use the N-word, and I'm not gonna quote this because I got it from a friend, not from a news source, but somebody told me that somewhere a while ago, you used blackface, which, I don't know, I so, I'm not seeing how you're going to continue to move the district in the right direction and save my son from the beatings he's had, from being shoved in bathroom stalls and being told, stay in your cage, you little monkey, from your friend telling you that you are the N-word and slamming your head on a lunch table. I mean, I could go on, and all the other parents that have contacted me. I want, my question to you, which I know you can answer, but I'm still gonna ask it so you can think about it later, is how should I trust you now? How should I go forward trusting you? And if you are still a part of the school board, how do I go forward trusting the school board? We had talked about pulling my son out of James Wood because of the racism and putting him in a different school. Well, if you're still here and you still have those feelings, that's not going to change. It's still gonna be the same higher-ups running the school district. So tonight, I came here just unsure of even how to talk to you, because you seemed so nice and so genuine. And I don't dig in. I don't know any of you, I mean, I don't mean this rudely. I don't know any of you as individual people, because I feel like if I dig in too much, there's something you're gonna find about everyone that you hate. But when you come up to this stand and you say, yep, I'm gonna help you get the racism kicked out of this school, and then you go out in the world and use racism, that screams to me, you're not gonna help. So I'm not gonna ask for your resignation yet. I'm gonna ask you to think about what I said, change your ways, quit using the N-word, and teach other people why they should not be using the N-word. And then if, when next month I'll come back, I'll see how you're doing, and we'll go from there if I need to voice my opinion to say you need to be taken off the school board. Thank you. Sorry, I want a couple of seconds over.
Thank you. Next is, is it Jonathan? Is it white?
White.
Well, okay. I apologize.
I want to start off by reciting a poem for you. It was written by a man who had survived Nazi Germany. First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. We want to speak about travesties, injustice. First person that comes to mind is Asada Shakur. She was a member of the Black Panther Party in Chicago who regularly fed kids, made sure that they had roofs over their heads, make sure that they had sleeping bags or beds, whichever their material circumstances allowed. The police officers and the elected officials in the area did not like this, because she didn't stop there. She asked why. Why did she have to do this? And she actively aimed to create better power structures in the community so that people could provide for themselves without asking for what you would call handouts, with all the taxpayer rhetoric. Eventually, after many false attempts at putting her in jail, including but not limited to claiming she had stolen thousands of dollars from a business that never existed, she was convicted by an all-white jury with no evidence and was put into solitary confinement for six months, until fellow party members came and helped her escape. She now lives in exile in Cuba. You want to speak of travesties of justice. I think the most anybody has received for January 6th is like six months at best, a slap on the wrist. When we speak of justice and we see what's going on here in our community, with small organizations whose name I will not mention bringing up the Protocols of the Elders of Zion, a text that was mandatory in Nazi Germany, and yet, we have people here on the board that will think nothing of using, I went a little over, using terms that should be common sense not to use, that would claim themselves to be victims when doing but much, much fewer things, language notwithstanding, have been executed by the very same government, that they receive a slap on the wrist. Do better.
Thank you.
I'm Joy Dunn from the Red Bud District. Good evening, school board members. I would like to address the board regarding the spending of taxpayer dollars for free breakfast and lunch for all students, or, excuse me, for students. You voted to have all students in nine schools receive free breakfast and lunch, even if they don't qualify for the services. The question is, why are we throwing taxpayer money in the garbage? As a former teacher in Frederick County and Winchester City, I observed our taxpayer money and how it was being spent. I was assigned to breakfast duty. I found it interesting that the students had to take items like milk, juice, yogurt, cereal, and Pop-Tarts. Many students didn't even open some of these items. So at first, I went and put them back, and I was told, you cannot do that, because once they are touched, no one can use them again. So if a child didn't like an item, they could not even save it or put it back, and it went in the garbage. Also, how nutritious are Pop-Tarts for breakfast? I also observed at lunchtime, if students didn't like a certain item, like the vegetables or the fruit, that they had to choose, and they did not eat it, and it went in the garbage. When families apply for free or reduced meals, how is that information checked? I believe if a family does qualify, then they should receive meals. However, it is said that when people receive free things, they usually do not take as much ownership as if they paid for it themselves. One other observation is when I taught, that many of my students received free meals. However, one night, we went to CC's Pizza, and I noticed that several of the students, or of my students, were eating there. Their comment to me later was, well, we come here every weekend to eat. Then, going to the Golden Corral, several of my more students were there eating dinner. So these students are receiving free breakfast and lunch in our schools. So if a parent can afford to be able to take the students out every weekend to the restaurants, then why are they being given free meals? So in conclusion, we do not need to use taxpayer money to give all students at the nine schools free breakfast and lunch, especially when so much of the food goes into the garbage. If you are concerned about who is truly impoverished, then provide them with free meals, and then verify their family's financial status, which is the same criteria that SNAP or the WIC programs would use. We want all students to be able to, excuse me, we want to be able to help all students who are truly in need. We do not need to pay for all meals with taxpayer dollars for all students, especially when so much of the food goes into the garbage. Thank you.
My name is Blaine Dunn. I'm for Red Bud. I associate myself with the previous speaker's comments. I think that for meals, spend the money where it's most useful, not for everybody. Spend those for really where they have a need. There are many families that do, but most don't. Let's talk about budgets. We're going through a budget process, and you, the seven of you, are decision-makers. And so my question to you is one pre-K. Six years ago, the school, six years ago, the board supervisors voted for a pre-K program which started with federal dollars. It's now been given to the local dollars. And that's about $3 million that you have for pre-K. My question to you is as follows. There were two small programs, less than 100 students, 120 students, that showed that pre-K did have a positive effect, which dissipated after the third or fourth grade. And there was no effect in grade 12. The states of Oklahoma and Georgia have state mandated pre-K programs, and they show no effect between those that went to pre-K and those that did not. So the question is, why do you have taxpayer dollars going into a program that dissipates by the third or fourth grade and has no long-term effect? You all can take a look at that. It's about a $3 million budget item, so I'd ask you to consider it. Last item is a small little item called Shrando. All of you have indicated that you are in favor of a fourth high school. Six years ago, under John Lamont, when John Lamont was chair, the board supervisors went and they voted for nine-point-something million dollars for an extension at Millbrook. That was turned down. Today, you have about 400 students more in capacity. My question and comment to each of you, and four of you are new, is that if you think that the fourth high school is the most appropriate solution to this, then each of you needs to go and send an email to Chairman Ludwig and to the rest of the board supervisors stating that. Four of you have not had a vote on this, three of you had. But for the four of you that are new, I would just encourage you to go that if you think that fourth high school is the most appropriate item, then say so in an email. It's public record, and that will support your position. If you think there's an alternative, state that as well. If you think that having additional trailers of Shrando is appropriate, that's fine too, but according to Dr. Hummer, you're gonna have 10 more. So I'm looking for a solution for Shrando. We need to have the capacity, we need to increase the capacity, and if you really want to do that, then you need to go and contact the board, every board member, as school board members, to achieve that. In addition, when you do so, indicate your recommendation on how to pay for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, next is Pastor Gene Hawkins.
My name is Gene Hawkins. I live in the Gainesboro District. Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board, I'd like to thank you for the hard work and the due diligence that you apply to a very difficult position that you find yourself in. Being a pastor for the bulk of my adult life, I understand completely what life of public service and living in a fishbowl feels like, looks like, and lives like. It's not fun. Everybody's a critic. Everybody knows everything that goes on. God forbid you make a mistake, because we're all perfect. I wish to address the current state of affairs concerning Mr. Atkins. As an American citizen and a Virginian, Mr. Atkins is afforded and guaranteed the same unalienable rights as every other citizen does. Being a public servant does not waive your rights. Namely, he's constitutionally guaranteed to be deemed innocent until proven guilty by a court of law, not the court of public opinion, nor of personal opinion, yours, mine, or anyone else. Personal opinion is also a right that all of us are guaranteed under the freedom of speech. But personal or public opinion, at the end of the day, is just that, opinion. Opinions are not the base for judgment of any citizen. None of us present here tonight may stand as the judge, the jury, and the executioner of a man accused by opinion. If those of us in the community are so incensed by our public opinions that they wish to remove Mr. Atkins without any due process afforded him by the Constitution, then let them do the research into the state constitution and find the laws and the process for the removal of Mr. Atkins, if indeed they feel that strongly about it. In the meanwhile, can we, as citizens, support our duly-elected school board to focus on the job that they were elected to do? There are difficult choices and hard things to have to deal with. We don't need this kind of distraction. It's a very sad day when we have to take an entire school board meeting to line up to speak common sense in a roomful of people who would throw out the laws of our land, our constitution, and the words to the Pledge of Allegiance that we all stood and spoke together this evening, "One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Next, we have Dana Brun.
Good evening, board members. My name is Dana Brun from the Back Creek District, and I want to thank you all for taking the time and standing, you know, for us to be able to stand here and listen to what we have to say tonight. And we really appreciate your public service for everything you've done. So I'll start by saying we appreciate the hard work and dedication that you all put in, especially in today's very, very torn society. I'm here tonight about this situation with Mr. Miles Atkins, because I hear CNN talking points all over this room. Do not resign. You're a veteran, you're a patriot, and all of us deserve due process. And remember Romans 3:23, "All men sin and fall short of the glory of God." I want to make sure that everybody knows nobody's perfect. So give it a break, repent. I firmly believe in our Constitution and the Bill of Rights. I believe that our First Amendment- I believe that our First Amendment right is the most important right in our country, and it's being censored everywhere we look. I'm here to speak on what I feel is right and constitutional, especially in the People's House. And Mr. Atkins exercised his right. Good for you. And for millions of others, for being there to stand for us and for you. The January 6th was a fiasco, and it keeps playing on in the media, and it's being proven as garbage. It's a lie, and it's all coming out now. By the way, the only one that can call for an insurrection is the President of the United States, who was the President of the United States on January 6th. No one else can call for an insurrection but the President. We all know who that is. Because someone on the board decides to stand for America and use their First Amendment right, they get pummeled. Now, it's okay for people to dance around in the streets with children in drag, born in the schools, and many other situations which we now have in our society. But we also have a situation where it appears that someone cannot use that First Amendment right in the People's House, and they happen to be on our board. Do not resign. And I understand that there are people that want him off the scoreboard because of it. Now, isn't this a republic? Have we forgotten? Do we have a First Amendment? And you don't have to agree with it, with people say. But there's thousands of people right now who are being harassed, and many are still locked up. That's a travesty in the whole country. What a waste of resources in the light of everything else that's happening. Most Americans who have paid attention and actually researched all this have a real good idea of what happened on January 6th. And we, the people, based on our Constitution, have the right to say peacefully what we believe, especially at the Capitol. This is our republican form of government, is it not? Is it not a democracy? It's not a democracy, guys. This is a republic. And people now are allowed, aren't people allowed to say anything? Isn't someone innocent until proven guilty? In Frederick County alone, don't we have situations all over like alleged embezzlement at James Wood? Are the innocent until proven guilty? Everyone here deserves the same treatment. And I do not believe that there was an insurrection, because the only one that can call for an insurrection was the President. I don't care whether, what political affiliation any one of you are, but it feels like tonight is kind of a lynching on Mr. Atkins. Do not resign. Let the school board do what they need to do, which is to give the students the best education that we all pay for. Witch hunts have to stop. There is a two-tiered system of justice, and that has to stop. Let's get back to work on behalf of the children of Frederick County. Don't point fingers, because there's three more pointing back at us. So look for and do the best for what's right, maybe not always popular, and let's get back to work. My gods believe in John 8:32, "And you shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." Do not resign. Panic. Patriots are now in control. Thank you.
Order in here. Jody, is it Yegi?
Are we good?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jody Yegi from the Redbud District. And most importantly, I'm a mom, and my kids go to FCPS. So I think that that's a really important piece for this evening. I'd like to start with a quote from Chair Sturtevant, from just this week, during a work session with some commentary added to maybe put it into a different perspective. So it started, "I don't mean to beat a dead horse, yet here I am again, talking about the rest of a school board member, again. But I've seen in the past where inmates," but we're talking about students here, not inmates. In this case, might be an appropriate term. "But I've seen in the past where inmates, we'd say, if you'll stop acting like a jerk, we'll give you this and this back. And five minutes after they get this and this back, they do the same thing again." Huh. Seems like we're here talking about the same thing again. A Winchester Star article in 2021 discussed the arrest of a hit-and-run with a DUI probable cause affidavit filed by the police department. The article went on to say that since the 2014 incident, Atkins said that he has changed a lot. Quote, "Since all that stuff, I think I really did a good job turning my life around, getting a degree," he said, "and I've done a lot of charity work to make amends for the past indiscretions." Fast forward to 2024. There have been two more alcohol-related offenses with due process and a federal trespassing arrest. Yet you continue to sit up here and get to discuss, and ironically, vote on the student behavior policy this evening. Mr. Atkins, after your last arrest, I stood before this board and pleaded for you to step down, because you are not a good role model for our students or my children. You've made statements about being bullied. I can assure you that following the rules and addressing adults in a public forum over facts is not bullying. But I can also assure you that drinking while driving and trespassing are illegal. And you continue to thumb your nose at rules over and over and over again. You should not have a vote on the rules of our students when you yourself cannot follow the rules of our land. And your fellow board members should make a motion this evening to strip you of all committee assignments and speak out against your behavior. I listened to three of you, Mr. Sturtevant, Ms. Martin, and Mrs. Klein, discuss student behavior for over an hour this week. Yet none of you has condemned your fellow board members' behavior. Is that what we're to teach our students, to not speak out when others are doing something illegal? Your lack of acknowledgement about the situation and silence speaks volumes. I'd like to end with another quote from Ms. Linda Martin that was made this week in regards to students. "I want to make sure there are consequences, consequences, consequences for bad behavior, not just a hit on the wrist so that our children understand. I'd like you all to hold your fellow members to the same standard that you expect of our students. Mr. Atkins should have consequences and be stripped of all committee assignments and asked to resign." Thank you.
Sonya Gud.
Good evening. My name is Sonya Marfatia Gud, and I live in the Back Creek District. I think it's pretty ironic that we're going over the student conduct policy when we have a school board member, Mr. Atkins, that would not agree to a code of conduct for the whole board last year. I also find it interesting that we have school board members that go on and on about discipline and repercussions and punishment when students go against policy, yet the same school board members will not speak on the charges against Mr. Atkins. Last month, a mother spoke about the issues of racism at James Wood Middle School, and Mr. Atkins was the first one to say, "It's unacceptable." And he and the board will look into it. How can we take you seriously, Mr. Atkins, when you use the N-word in private? Regardless of whether it was with a hard R or not, the word is still offensive, and the kids are only doing what you yourself do. I know it's wrong to use that word. Do you? How about if a kid breaks into a school, trashes windows in classrooms, drinks on the property, and then drives home under the influence? We expect consequences for that kid, don't we? What about your consequences? Is this a "do as I say, not as I do" situation? It's hypocritical. You've said before that you've changed. You'll do better. You do not take this rule seriously, because if you did, you would have stepped down to work on your issues. All of these charges distract from the good that Frederick County Public Schools is doing. All of these headlines make a fool out of all of us. We should be proud to claim we live in Frederick County, but instead we are known as the county that has a school board member that's an insurrectionist with a drinking while driving problem. Do better. Don't drink and drive. Don't break the law. It should be that simple.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wishes to speak this evening? All right, then. Next thing is the, next up is the reports by the Superintendent Dr. Hummer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three items that I would like to mention. First is, I would like to welcome all of our new administrators, and we are very fortunate to continue to attract such great talent. We have a lot of great things happening here in Frederick County, and we also want to make sure that we address all of the work that we have to do. And in order to do that, and in order to meet our goals, we need to continue to find and cultivate great leaders in our school division. Welcome and thanks, and welcome to our family. I also want to thank the school board for recognizing our social workers. They work very, very hard. They're an integral part of our school division. They always go above and beyond what is expected of them. They not only fulfill their daily responsibilities, but they also provide proactive supports for teachers, students, and families in order to meet the needs on a daily basis. We thank you so much for those watching at home or watching later. And we appreciate all that you do for our students and our community. Lastly, I don't know if you all know this, but we have a pretty amazing HR department. And I wanted to recognize them for their hard work that they did two Saturdays ago and all the hard work that they put into that. But they're always trying to find new ways of attracting staff and keeping staff. And they dedicated an entire Saturday to try to find and attract new teachers for our students, and we greatly appreciate your time doing that. So we had over 60 applicants of those. We offered 11 positions contracts. We still have some things to go through there. And I also want to thank our Chair, Mr. Sturtevant. I know he was there greeting some new teachers and mingling with others. So thank you, Mr. Sturtevant, for being there. That was very much appreciated and noticed. And again, thank you to our HR department. They did a fantastic job. Very lucky to have them and very lucky to have Mrs. Frakely leading the charge. And thank you very much. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Next, we have, do we have any unfinished business?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. New business, next is new business. We have committee reports, correct?
Yes, sir. And the first one is Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee.
On March 4th, 2024, the Personnel Committee of Frederick County School Board was held at the Dr. Melton Wright Board Meeting Room in the Frederick County School Board Administration Building. There is only one item, action item needed to be brought to the meeting. I move the board approve the minutes for the Personnel Committee meeting held on March 4th.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
All of the favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, minutes have been approved. Is Ms. Klein, Ms. Klein, do you have the finance report?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and individuals viewing online in the galley, I have the Finance Committee report from the Finance Committee meeting held on March 7th, 2024. A meeting of the Finance Committee of Frederick County School Board was held on March 7th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:34 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery answered board member questions from the previous committee meeting. She also discussed the different state House and Senate versions of the proposed state budget and shared the important dates of the remaining budget timeline for FCPS. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the estimated state revenue proposals for Frederick County Public Schools and discussed the effect of the two different state budget proposals on the potential county operating request. She also shared the acceptable uses of at-risk state and local match funds. Next, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the funding that would be needed from the Frederick County Board of Supervisors based on the different state proposals. She also shared the different FCPS funds, beginning with the School Textbook Fund. Mrs. Camery discussed the Debt Service Fund, including its principal and interest payments, funding sources and uses. She gave an illustration of an actual bond financing and reviewed the Capital Projects Fund. She also shared the Private Purpose Fund expenditures and its restricted activities. Mrs. Anderson discussed the Consolidated Services Fund and the Construction Fund. She also shared the Health Insurance Fund, including its funding, sources, and uses in the local onsite health care clinic. Next, she discussed the Special Grant Fund. Dr. Reeves gave an overview of the Northwestern Regional Education Program, INREP. She also shared the vision, mission, goal, and areas of focus and program improvements. Mrs. Anderson discussed the INREP Operating Fund, including the uses and sources of funds in the INREP Textbook Fund. Dr. Hummer shared that there are no action items coming out of this meeting. The meeting adjourned at 5:36 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on March 7th?
No questions.
Hearing there are no questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I motion that the board fully approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on March 7th, 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have Mr. Atkins, Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on March 11th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:44 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the Capital Projects List, highlights, and notable upcoming projects. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the completion of the James Wood High School renovation. Mr. Goodwin shared the actions taken to address concerns regarding the James Wood High School Performing Arts Department. He also discussed the next steps. Mr. Lee gave an update on the progress of the work on the James Wood Middle School service line. He also explained that the project is funded through the spend-down funds generated from meal reimbursement, which must be used on cafeteria improvement projects. Mr. Goodwin shared a progress update for the expansion opportunities at Middletown Elementary School. He explained that the expansion would add an additional 13 classrooms to increase the current capacity to 527 students to 786 students. He also shared a progress update for the expansion opportunities at Jordan Springs Elementary School. He explained that this expansion would add an additional 12 classrooms to increase the current capacity of 500 students to 737 students. Mr. Raymond, Principal at Jordan Springs Elementary School, and Ms.
Domenico.
Domenico. Sorry about that, Ms. Domenico. Principal at Middletown Elementary School shared their input and involvement in the expansion process. Mr. Lee discussed the lack of full bus canopies at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, Indian Hollow Elementary School, and Jordan Springs Elementary School. He shared that all other elementary schools in Frederick County have full bus canopies. He also discussed the property for, I'm sorry. He also discussed the property for the potential fourth high school. He shared that the 83-acre property was purchased in 2013 for $2,075,000. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on March 11th? Seeing none, we have one action item coming out of committee. I recommend the full board approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds Committee held on March 11th, 2024.
Mr. Atkins, excuse me, if you can make that a motion instead of a recommendation?
Oh, motion to the full board that they approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds Committee meeting on March 11th, 2024.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Ms. White with the Instruction Committee Report.
A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on March 11th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 6:03 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. William Sandy shared information on the summer learning extended school year program. Ms. Wagner discussed at the Summer Learning Academies and Elementary Summer Learning Academy. Dr. Myers and Ms. Simon reported on the Middle School Summer Academy. Ms. Thompson shared information about the 2024 Charting Pathways Summer Academy and the High School Summer School. Ms. Heingardner discussed the FCPS Ignites, a week-long orientation for new professionals with Frederick County Public Schools. Dr. Angelo reported on the Administrator Summer Leadership Academy. And Dr. William Sandy and Ms. Stevens gave an update on the Child Find location. Dr. Angelo reviewed the code, policy, and regulation regarding how instructional materials are being selected. He also explained the library selection process and how families can limit access to explicit books and shared the data on the request to reconsider and limit access. The meeting adjourned at 6:58 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the meeting minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members? Are there any questions from board members about the information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on March 11th?
Questions?
No questions. There is one action item, and I would move that the full board approve the meeting minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on March 11th, 2024.
Second.
And motion has been forwarded and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. Next and last is the Student Conduct and Support Committee Report. A meeting of the Student Conduct and Support Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on March 14th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:07 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Boland reported on student behavior and administrative response. He shared that the school boards are required by Virginia Code to maintain and follow an up-to-date policy manual. He shared the benefits of the new manual, the difference between the manual and the Frederick County Public Schools Regulation 402R-A, and the responses to a behavior. He also discussed the definition of the term behavior and the behavioral categories. Mr. Boland shared the difference, the different student behaviors and administrative responses and steps taken after an incident is reported to the administration. He also discussed the different leveled responses as well as disciplinary consequences for the code of conduct violations, what behaviors have been added to the code of conduct, and future training of staff. Mrs. Jordan reviewed current student cellphone policy use, cellphone use policy and regulation. She also shared results collected from the cellphone use survey that was sent to administrators, teachers, students, and parents, and she reviewed the proposed cellphone regulations. Mrs. Jordan discussed planned next steps, which includes gathering additional information from stakeholders, drafting a new cellphone regulation, training administrators, and communicating the new regulations to the FCPS community for full implementation at the start of the FY25 school year. The meeting adjourned at 6:33 PM on a two-to-zero vote. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from the board members about the information shared at the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on March 14th?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
The code of conduct is a draft, and it has not been presented to the full board for approval, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So that draft is located on the minutes. That is a regulation, so it doesn't need to be approved by the board, but we encourage you to give us feedback.
Okay.
Because the deadline is going to be June 6th. That's when we present it to our administrators, and it goes into effect next year. So please take a look at that, provide us with feedback and input on the code of conduct, and if there's things you would like for us to adjust or change or discuss, please let us know.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Atkins. Dr. Hummer, could you, for public's sake, could you explain how that works and why, as a regulation, that's not something that would necessarily be voted on, and how this board could have opinion or input on that?
Absolutely. Great question, Mr. Atkins. And then I'll have my esteemed Mrs. Jordan over there kind of chime in here as well. But essentially, the school board is responsible for writing and implementing policy, and then it is up to the superintendent to roll out that policy through regulations. And I have to make sure, as the superintendent, that I essentially write that regulation in the spirit of what the school board would like with that particular policy. So we have a code of conduct policy that says we need a code of conduct, and that is the essential components of that policy, and then the regulation is what we implement in the day-to-day school division. Now, if there are concerns, or if there's things you would like to see adjusted or changed, that is where I would take your feedback and input, and then I would insert it into that code of conduct to make sure that it aligns with your vision of how you would like to see that implemented. So, all that to say, if there are changes and adjustments you would like to see, we would make those, but you don't necessarily have to vote on those. The only other thing that I would say, if there is a lot of back and forth, and there is a lot, and this is for any policy and regulation, there might have to be some firming up of a policy if there is maybe some confusion or misunderstanding in regards to having a policy aligned with a regulation. So that is where we would have further conversations of maybe taking some components of that regulation and inserting it into a policy, which I don't think we're at that point with either of these components, but if there was, then that would be the guidance that I would provide to you. And, Ms. Jordan, if you want to add anything there, did I capture that?
I think you did a great job. I have nothing to add.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I would just like to see an escalation on the racial slurs portion and the bullying, especially of students with disabilities and bullying in general. I think that it's pretty clear that we have a problem with that in FCPS, and I think that we need to address those seriously and set expectations for our students that that kind of behavior, that kind of language, and that kind of activity bullying students is zero tolerance.
I second that.
Anything further? All right, then I motion to the full board to approve the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on March 14th, 2024.
Point of order. I know as the Chair of the full board can he make a motion on that because it is a committee thing?
Yeah, so back in January, the board approved the school board's special rules of order, and number two on that does say the chairman may make a motion without vacating the chair. So that is a rule that the board's adopted, and it is fine for him to do.
Just wanted to keep us legal. Thank you.
Understand.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that ends the new business. Next on the agenda is board member comments. Is there anyone on the board that wishes to make a statement this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I better drink something first. Folks, first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that's come out tonight, those of you that stayed especially. There were a lot of interesting comments and concerns that were related to us tonight, and I appreciate the civic engagement. It would be wonderful to see this many people in all of our meetings, and with this much concern with all that we do here in the school board. I also want to congratulate all of those students who won awards, one of which is my knuckle-headed son, who didn't show up, but here's his award. So Jed Bell, if you're watching, you're a knucklehead. He'll love me for that. And then I'd like to congratulate those appointments that were made to those individuals who will be moving up or moving over or moving into a new position. I think it's wonderful that we're able to hire so many wonderful people here, and a big here here for our HR department. And then that brings me to the comments. Every day, so first and foremost, I'm a civics teacher. I'm an eighth-grade civics teacher. That doesn't mean I'm an expert in civics by far, but every day, we salute the flag in my school. Today, I got to do it twice. And these are, one of the questions I pose to my students is why do we salute the flag? And of course, they come back with various answers, some of them goofy, but most of them sincere and serious. And they mention that it's a symbol. It's a symbol of who we are. It's a symbol of our freedom, a symbol of our men and women in the armed services protecting us from harm's way, much like those buildings in Washington, DC are symbols for us all. And I think that that has a lot to do with a lot of the angst and upset folks that are out there, that the symbol of our country was, for the most part, it didn't look like it was a welcomed visit or a tourist visit inside, and that's all I'm going to say about that. However, we all have our Fifth Amendment rights, which is due process. It's been mentioned ad nauseam this evening, but it's true. Due process is one of the most important tenets of our Bill of Rights, so that people aren't hauled off to, well, I guess I could make a sort of an example of the gentleman who dared to run against Vladimir Putin and found himself in a prison up in the far north because he decided he was not in agreement with the current president. We don't have that system here. We have the system here where everyone gets a fair shake until proven guilty. Has a board member here been arrested? Yes. Has a board member here been convicted? No. And quite frankly, this body doesn't have the authority to remove anyone from this body. We're elected officials. And that brings me to another sort of process, the process of how to essentially get things done, we all must follow a process. If there are enough individuals that believe one of us, any of us, need to be removed, then it's your duty to put together a petition and go to a court of law. It's not this body's duty. It's your duty, because you elected us. I say this because we have a lot of very important work to do for our students. As the Duns pointed out, we have a very big budget coming through where there's a lot of wonderful possibilities that it could pay for, including a brand-new high school. And that's what we should all be focused on, and that's what I'm going to focus on. However, if things come down to a guilty verdict, then that's something that this board does have to take into consideration and does have to discuss. But until that day, this board should be focused primarily on what our, what our job is, which is to work for the schools and for the students. So moving forward, as many emails and phone calls that I've been given, I welcome them, call me, I don't care if you're in my district, if you're unhappy with what I'm saying, tell me about it, we'll talk. But I want you to know that I'm here to work for the, not just the people of the Opeckin District, which is what I represent, but for the people of Frederick County, and that's the students, the teachers, the administrators. So, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Ms. White?
Congratulations to all of our administrative appointments. I'm excited to see the majority of women stepping into leadership roles, especially in Women's History Month. I think that they're going to do a great job. They're talented and qualified, and they're going to push our division to a new level. Also, with our transportation gentleman that joined us, he's clearly very talented, and we'll do the same. Congratulations to all our student athletes. We got to see athletes that are not normally rewarded or showed, you know, swim team and wrestling and track, and I think those are great, great sports to participate and give you a lot of life skills. As for the majority of the public comments, I think we do have something before us that's very concerning. January 6th aside, I think that the pattern of behavior is very concerning and for which we would discipline our students and discipline our staff. And so I think it's important to note that regardless of whether we like the person or not, it's, it isn't a good example. Our body does not have the ability to remove, and even if we call for a resignation, it is not, it has nothing to do with due process. We are not removing this individual's due process rights by requesting or calling for a resignation, so I just want to make that clear. The power is in the people, as it is throughout America in all elections. The power is in the Shawnee District citizens' hands. If you truly believe that this individual is not capable of leading and is a danger to our division, you have the power to do that. It is a portion of the votes that elected this gentleman into office, and it is doable. So you have the power to stand up for what you believe in and take it to the courts, and that would be a due process. So it's unfortunate. Miles, I think that you are a decent person. I think that you have made good decisions, for the most part. There are things that we have disagreed on, but I do believe your pattern of behavior is concerning, and I think I've spoken directly to you about this, and I hope that that changes so that we can show the division that change is possible and good is possible despite past. But I don't know if that's a reality. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, are you still on the line?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'd also like to add a comment. Thank you, first of all, to all our administrative appointments. I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members' welcome. There are some great names, great resumes that we got to see. Looking forward to seeing the impact that you'll be making on our schools. And congratulations to all the student athletes. Really proud of all of you all. It's great to see such capability and a diversity of sports. It's not just one over another, it's in multiple sports areas. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we are at a precipice at Frederick County where we can, there are some magnificent things going on. In this budget that my cohort has spoken of, we have the opportunity to incentivize our teachers to recruit some of the best talent out of our universities and bring them to Frederick County, and then also reward our teachers that are currently in those positions and allow them, enable them to stay within the county. We have so many great things, the Color and Arts Program and other things in the budget and on our radar that we want to focus on and may come to fruition in such a good way. It is a shame that we have had to deal with the situation that we've had to deal with as far as the distractions pertaining to Mr. Atkins, and I am also a firm believer in due process. That is the backbone of our country, and Mr. Atkins is dealing with that in his personal life. And in addition to that, he is also serving on this board until a verdict is, until a verdict has been delivered. And every decision that I have had the privilege of watching him make has been in the good interest of the students. So I, as long as that continues and until a verdict is delivered, then we must, as a body, continue to do what we were elected to do, and that is represent the interests of our students first and foremost. And we would greatly appreciate your support in doing so as we move forward in this very, very, dare I say, stressful budget season for all parties involved, and all the rest of the accompanying things that come with running a school district in addition to that budget process. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That is all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any other board member comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you shaking your head, Frank?
No.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, just like everybody else has done, I want to go ahead and start, obviously, with the students. I, you know, want to congratulate them for all their athletic accomplishments, the coaches and staff that guide them, and the parents spending late nights, driving them back and forth from practice to different meets and matches. Hats off to you for staying behind your students. To our new incoming staff and our appointments, thank you for, I think most of the staff was from Frederick County and just moving to a different position with the all but one. And, you know, welcome to our newcomer. And then for the rest of you, keep digging in. We're trying to keep everybody homegrown and sticking right here with us. I'm glad that they're not going out to other counties. We have a problem where we do lose a lot of administrators and staff to other counties for one reason or another, so we're glad that we're building a foundation where they want to stay. It speaks to what you're putting forth, Dr. Hummer, and the rest of the cabinet, so thank you all for the work you're putting in. Let's see, and then congratulations to our staff that got some awards as well tonight, didn't want to leave them out. As far as comments, I mean, yeah, feeling some pressure, you know, so, you know, I see all the stuff that's went on. This has been brought up, what, a year and a half, almost two years ago? And then we had the same kind of topic and talk, and then the same few people get up and say the same thing. But look at it. Look at what we're doing here in the county. We're going ahead, we're pushing through to get safer, secure schools. I do want to talk with you after this, and I want to address your concerns, Ms. Dobbs. But we're pushing through, we're setting up, and we're, we just looked at some numbers today, where our graduation levels are going up, our students are learning better. You know, we're hitting different benchmarks. We've went ahead, we've provided transparency within the schools that we didn't have before. So the nine-to-five parent that comes and works- So the nine-to-five parent um that comes and works a little overtime or something, and they come back to try to watch their kids' school board meetings should be public information, and, you know, in the past, I guess it is kind of public information, but you had to go ahead and FOIA that. We've got it on YouTube now, we can all go see it, it's government transparency. We've got a budget that's, you know, you guys have worked on and, and just done an amazing bang-up job that's transparent. We didn't have that before. So I think that what we've done up here on the board, not a me thing, it's a we thing. We've went out and we've done what's best for the citizens and students here in the county. I know that we don't always agree on everything, Mr. Dunn, um, but yes, you, you asking for my um, my recommendation and, and how I feel, I've, I've said in the past, I know we had a conversation the other day by phone, um, but I look forward to seeing a fourth high school. Um, I think it is needed out here. We do have an overcrowding problem, and to your point, it will take care of um those trailers over there at Sherranda. We, we don't think any students should be working, or working or um learning or, or doing anything in those trailers. We're trying to move forward as a county, I, like you, to your point, you know, this has been uh on, down the road, I think two thousand thirteen, um, is, is the year you referenced, uh, if I'm correct. Um, yeah, we're trying to grow this county in a positive direction, a responsible direction as far as, you know, are we building it correctly? Are we um doing what's right with the, the taxpayer dollar and getting the most bang out of our buck? So yeah, if you ask me if I'm going to resign, come get me. It's, you're going to need a wrecking ball to get me out of here. I'm going to keep fighting for the students, parents, and the taxpayers of this county. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
All right, then I guess I'm up. On March the ninth, I attended the, a job fair, and forgive my old age, what school was I at? I don't remember. I couldn't remember for the love of me. There was a great turnout, and, and it was a rotten rainy day. I mean, it was one of those nasty days where we, we could hear the rain beating down on the school, so it was a bad day. And I was able to speak with a few of the applicants myself. The staff that came in to work on a Saturday, I, I, I've worked many a Saturday in my, in my life, and I was never happy to work on a Saturday. They were smiling, they were happy, they were excited, I, they were energized. Ms. Frickly was there, uh, I can't remember names, Rochelle doing all the magic that she did on the computers. It was fascinating. I, I have seen, in the three months that I've been on this board, I, I've met a lot of staff, teachers, administrators, uh, all the behind-the-scenes things that a lot of people never get to see, and I am so impressed with the dedication of our staff. Um, a lot of things going behind the scenes, and like I said, most of you never get to see it, but all these folks that worked that job fair just impressed me. They were so upbeat and excited to do it, and, and I was glad that I was able to come out and uh, and, and be a part of it. In keeping with uh some of my campaign promises, it's taken me a while to get started on a couple of them. Yesterday, I had the privilege of touring Millbrook High School, um, and I was impressed by a lot of the things I saw. There were, are some amazing students in our school system. I saw some fantastic artists doing things that I could only wish that I could do. There was one class that I went into, it was a digital visualiz, visualization class, and these kids were doing things that I didn't even know that they could do on that level. And I am hoping, I, I talked to the teacher, and I'm hoping that when these presentations are done in a couple weeks, maybe we could get some of those students in here to present those things, because it was fascinating watching those kids. So I would like to thank Principal Alendorf for taking time out of her day to show me around her school. And after she took me through that school, she did something that I was not even expecting. She had to go serve lunch to the kids because she didn't have enough staff to serve the kids, so she, the principal of the school, went in to serve the students. I volunteered to help her, she didn't ask me to, but that just shows dedication of our staff to our students. One of the other things that I, I campaigned on, I found that we still have books in our school libraries that should not be there. I campaigned on getting the sexually explicit adult content out of our student libraries. I've been told by some that I can't do that because of our policies. Uh, the more someone tells me that I can't do something, the more determined I am to do it. If I gave heed to all the naysayers telling me what I can't do, I would never have gotten elected to this position. So let me assure you now, I will get those sexually explicit adult content books removed from our libraries if it's the last thing that I ever do, and you can bank on that. I appreciate those of you that came out tonight exercising your First Amendment rights to petition your government for redress of grievances. I wish, thank you for coming out and expressing your concerns. As I told the Winchester Star, which they left out of that article, you're innocent until proven guilty. I've been in corrections now for thirty-six years, I've seen a lot of people that were locked up. I don't, I don't get the opportunity to pass judgment on people. I didn't when I'm in corrections, and I'm not going to do it here. I have my opinions, I've talked to Mr. Miles at length about what I thought, and that's where I'm going to leave it. So, that's all I have to say, but I do appreciate all of you coming out, and again, I wish to thank all the staff that works for Frederick County because you amaze me every day, every teacher, every custodian, bus driver, and I know I'm leaving a ton of the scriptures out of there, but I have just been impressed with what I've seen for the last three months, so that's all I have to say. So that ends the chair, or the board comments. Um, we do have an announcement this evening, and that is the next school board meeting will be on April sixteenth, excuse me, at seven P M. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.